All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the February 14th School Committee Meeting. Before we get started, I want to remind everybody that this is being livestreamed. I also want to take the opportunity to thank our camera crew who is here for public access, along with Anita for doing our minutes and Eric for helping us with our livestream. Figured I would just get that out of the way now. All right, first order of business is to approve the regular meeting minutes of January 10th. I think everybody received the updated ones from Anita. If I could get a motion?
I'll make a motion for the approval of the regular meeting minutes dated January 10th, 2024.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Actually, yes, one comment. I did watch the livestream and I thought it was very good, but some of us had microphones maybe further away, so the volume was a little off, but if we could make sure that...I don't think they need to be on all the time, but when we go to speak, so everybody can hear. All right, next we'll move to Student Recognition Awards. We'll start with Major Edwards.
It's my pleasure to invite Ben Seiver up to the mic. He's been selected for our February Student of the Month. Ben is a highly motivated individual, both academically and athletically. In class, teachers can count on Ben to be paying careful attention to instruction, and when he finishes his work, he's first to take out a book and read. Ben participates thoughtfully in class discussions and doesn't hesitate to ask questions or take a risk. His favorite subject continues to be math. Ben's helpful nature contributed to the Major Edwards Souls for Souls Shoe Drive being a success this past December, and according to Ben, the best part of being a fifth grader is being a role model for the younger kids. Love hearing that. Outside of school, Ben spends the majority of his free time playing sports. He is a member of the Worcester football team, a Lemmonster wrestling team, and a West Boylston basketball team. Ben also enjoys playing with his younger sister Lily, camping at the Cape in the summer, and taking family trips to Florida. When Ben grows up, he would like to become a professional football player. We are certainly proud of Ben for his exemplary effort and positive attitude. These qualities make him an excellent choice for the Student of the Month. Congratulations, Ben.
Congratulations, Ben. Any committee members like to ask him a few questions?
I'd love to. Ben, congratulations. We met right before this meeting and you already impressed me very much. You're a great communicator. You looked me right in the eye, you gave me a big firm handshake. It's pretty awesome. From the teacher's side of things...so I'm a teacher during the day, and the fact that your teachers say that you are involved in class discussions and you ask questions, that's awesome. Because when you do that, you know, you don't just help out yourself, you're helping out your classmates as well. That's pretty awesome. I mean, that's being a leader in the classroom. You also play a lot of sports. What's your favorite sport to play?
Football.
Football. And so it says a Worcester football team. Is that Vikings, Cowboys?
Worcester Cowboys.
Cowboys, right on. Okay, so here's my other question. You want to be a professional football player. If you could get drafted by any team...
Oh.
Now, this is going to be a long...you know, it's a long ways down the line, so maybe there's a certain team that might rebuild, maybe get a new quarterback. What team would you want to be drafted by?
I don't care how good they are, Buffalo Bills.
Buffalo Bills! That's pretty cool. That's pretty cool. You don't mind the snow, then?
No.
Awesome, dude. Well, congratulations. We're very, very proud of you, and you're going to be up here next year, correct? Up here in the sixth grade? Awesome. Ben, congrats, buddy. We're proud of you. Buffalo Bills.
At least he didn't say the Chiefs.
All right. Hey, you walk like a football player, you look like a football player. Right? So, we win state championships around here, so stick around, buddy. All right. I'm pleased to introduce our Middle School Student of the Month, Kayla Rabella. The team, six teachers, have the following to say about our recipient. A-plus average for Term Two in all of his core classes. A-plus. Highly motivated, dedicated to his schoolwork. Kayla often seeks out teacher feedback and applies suggestions to his work. He'll often talk out procedures, facts, and explanations with the teacher before approaching assignments. Daily repeated class participation and contributions are greatly appreciated. He self-advocates in the moment when clarification is needed on behalf of himself and the entire class. He's supportive toward members of whatever group he's working in. He's a leader within that group. He volunteers regularly to complete his share and more of the work of the group, and you can always depend on Kayla's work to be done with precision and completion. He's actually a remarkable student with extraordinary student skills who always demonstrates a genuinely positive attitude. Kayla also enjoys playing soccer, and he is a member of the ski club. In fact, he also does freestyle skiing on the weekends and in his free time. He loves to be competitive with that. His favorite food is pizza, although he would never turn down a good meal. Pizza is his favorite. And he has two siblings, also excellent students. The oldest now is in college. And Kayla's favorite class this year has been math. And when asked what he wanted to do one day, he gave it some thought and said, "A doctor, probably, would be a good profession for me." So, a doctor that also skis in the Olympics and plays pro soccer. How's that sound? All right, awesome. Kayla, congratulations.
Congratulations, Kayla. Mrs. Green?
Hi, Kayla.
Hi.
How are you?
Good.
I can't say that I am at all surprised that you are here. I expected that we would see you at some point, because I do know a little bit about you. I know that you've always been a great student. Watched you on the soccer field this past fall. Fierce, absolutely fierce. And I don't know if you remember, and I used to work at the Mountain, so I also know you were a pretty cool dev team participant, right? So, math is your favorite subject.
Yes.
Really, Mr. Walker? He doesn't get a lot of people saying that he's their favorite. No, I'm kidding. What's your nickname?
Uh, Thor.
Thor? Why?
Uh, he said my name sounded like the god of math, so that's how it started.
I like it. I like it. So, sixth grade's going pretty well this year? Sounds like you're doing very, very well. A-plus average?
Yes.
Something to be very proud of, because I know how busy you are outside of school. So, the fact that you're able to do that and all the extra stuff really says something about you, about your drive and dedication. So, this is obviously well-deserved. Congratulations to you, and best of luck. We hope to see you again.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Congratulations.
Good job, buddy. Our high school recipient of the Student of the Month is actually playing basketball tonight in Littleton. Her game was rescheduled because of the weather conditions. We were fortunate during senior night to be able to recognize her in front of her parents and everybody who was at the game. But I'll save, just for the record, that Samantha Mullins, grade 12, is a high honor student with As in all subjects. She's playing basketball as we speak and is a captain. She also interns at Revive Athletic Recovery in the Strength and Conditioning and Athletic Training Department, right in Worcester. Sam's the top contributor, is a top contributor on the varsity softball team as well, where she's also a captain, and she's a member of the National Honor Society, happens to be president. She's also a member of the National Art Honor Society and Spanish Honor Societies. She's Secretary of the Student Council and a class officer for the senior class. She plans to major in Kinesiology and Exercise Science at a four-year school. She's been accepted at several schools, Penn State among others, and she's still trying to narrow down her final choice. And in her free time, she volunteers her time coaching youth basketball and other youth sports. She loves homemade pizza, loves to bake, and I think, like Kayla, represents the best of what West Boylston has to offer. So, congratulations, Samantha and Kayla. Thank you.
All right, next we will hear from our Student Advisory Council.
All right, we'll get started with the Acapella Club and the GSA. They and advisor Isuki are beginning their carnation sales for their Valentine's Day fundraiser, and GSA officers are finalizing the Chosen Name Professional Development for teachers.
The High School Student Council is currently organizing the Spring Spirit Week that will coincide with the Spring Dance, which will be March 15th. They are also currently hosting a...or currently getting ready for a clothing drive, which will be from March 4th till March 22nd. This is usually done with Tejado as a competition, but this year it will be just West Boylston. The Interact Club packed up Valentines for the Senior Center last week, along with serving breakfast for them. They are now planning a possible charity walk, which will be along the lines of In It to End It for the coming spring. The National Honor Society is currently handing out applications to students who qualify with a GPA of an 85% or higher, and Faculty Council will be reviewing these. They are also organizing fundraisers to raise money for scholarships. They are also...they are planning to hold a dance for the middle school later in the year, but this has not started getting organized yet.
National Art Honor Society will be sending out membership invitations this month to students who received an A in a studio art class, and the induction ceremony will be held in April. National Spanish Honor Society has been meeting on Wednesdays, and students are organizing themselves into committees to better carry out the society's goals. They are also working on a project with NAHS to get some cultural art paintings done in the Spanish honors room. Triumph Music Honor Society had a successful first karaoke night at the Beeman Library this last month, and will move forward in scheduling them monthly until May. The music department as a whole will be going to Music in the Parks on May 16th to perform for judges, and then go to Six Flags, and Triumph Honor Society will be seeing Waterford Elephants on Broadway on April 17th.
The volleyball club, students have been meeting on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday in the weight room to strength train for the upcoming volleyball season when they reenter the gym. Wellness Club has been organizing and planning for Refresh Day, which will be held in May. They will also be collaborating with Interact for the possible In It to End It cancer walk. They have also put up a bulletin board in the high school wing, which currently shows healthy relationship awareness during the month.
The freshman class will be holding a middle school march mingle dance on March 1st and a dodgeball tournament for middle and high school students on March 12th. They are also working towards play comps. The sophomores will be holding a trivia night for the community on Thursday, March 21st, and will...and are also working towards play comps. They're also getting ready for the plant sale in May and working with very few farms as in previous years.
Finally, the senior class is having two fundraisers this month. The first will be this Saturday at the Clark Tournament here at West Boylston, where they will be selling concessions. And then the Wednesday we return from February break, the 28th, right after school, there will be a volleyball tournament in which students from the middle school and high school can compete for a cost of $5. Also, for a sports update, the girls' Clark Tournament will be this Saturday. They will also be participating in a state tournament later on, and the boys, at some point in this month, the dates are not finalized yet, will be participating in the Simada Tournament. That is all we have. If you have any questions about anything, feel free to ask now.
Excellent, thank you. Any committee members have any questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Great job, guys. Thank you so much.
All right, Mr. Fornier, we'll move on to your highlight on schools.
Thank you. development, which has been a focus of our professional development for this year. This was a stated goal in the district's strategic plan, which was a five-year plan, and an important part of our NIASC school goals and our school improvement plan for this year and for next year. The staff, the full school effort, has been dedicated towards curriculum mapping for all subject areas, where all subjects are presently updating or in the process of creating curriculum apps. We've been using a template, using Understanding by Design by Grant Wiggins, and this template utilizes what's known as backwards design in planning with the end goal in mind. I'll give you an example of what a template looks like. So, we use this template, and we fill in the information in each subject area so that, you know, AP Calculus, the unit, will take place over two weeks. These are the standards and learning standards from the Massachusetts Curriculum Frameworks. These are the essential questions, big picture questions, and then detailed skills, resources, instructional strategies that go into that particular lesson. Each subject is in the process of making detailed curriculum maps. That will then be part of our written curriculum, which will be archived and available for the community and for all teachers. Completed maps will be submitted for review through Google Classroom, and they will be reviewed first by the departments for accuracy, then by the building leadership team, and then finally by the district administration. High school teachers are mapping or updating as they teach in the new high school schedule. So, with the new schedule, with the new periods, the new structure of the schedule, their lesson plans are being updated and made to fit into that schedule, so that at the same time, the curriculum maps are being updated, which has been working out well. Understanding by Design, which is Grant Wiggins and Jay McTeague, this is basically the idea that you start with the finished product. What are the desired results? You know, what are the established goals? What are the big ideas that we want students to have? And once we determine what that is, we determine what sufficient evidence will be available. What goals in mind will allow our students to perform tasks, and what teach...what areas should the teacher focus on in order to reach those desired goals? And then it goes back to the curriculum planning and mapping, so that the teacher can provide the experience and the instruction to reach the end goal. Part of our curriculum mapping also involves incorporating West Boylston's vision of a graduate into our curriculum. So, what this means is embedding the personal characteristics, academic capabilities, habits of mind, and interpersonal skills that we expect from a West Boylston student. These qualities become embedded in each unit and every lesson from grade six through 12 across all content areas. This is a requirement of all high schools. This is part of the NIASC evaluation and accreditation process. Specific social-emotional learning advisory lessons have been developed for middle school, as well as the development of self-assessment tools for high school students. Vision of the graduate is something that we talk about a lot. You see some of the tenets of the vision of the graduate in the banners that are in the hallway of the middle high school, and I recently put together just like a little sketch of, you know, what the vision of the graduate's all about. So, as a young...as a young student coming into the sixth grade, we look for students to demonstrate intellectual curiosity. We look for them to develop independence, okay? We ask them to work hard and do hard better, and develop resilience in all things, and to demonstrate responsibility as part of being in middle school. They step up to the high school, and they learn about respect for other cultures and other human differences, and respect for themselves. They learn to be civic-minded. They learn to communicate in many different ways, verbal, written, social media. They develop social awareness that it isn't all about me, I'm not the center of the universe, I'm one piece in a vast universe. And they...they learn executive problem-solving skills. So, these different parts of the vision of the graduate, when put together, you know, put each of our students on the path to success. This is...the idea that we embed these things into our curriculum is what NIASC strives Currently, we have been developing advisory lessons for the use in students...with students in grades six through eight. We've done this in conjunction with Megan, our guidance intern, who's working with Mrs. LaRoche and Ms. Carlson, based on building appropriate social-emotional skills for middle school students. These lessons are designed with the vision of the graduate in mind, so that we're embedding these in our work with students. So far, we have eight lessons that will be used for all middle school grades, with a variety of activities for the teachers to utilize each school year. We will begin the implementation of these advisory lessons for middle school in the coming school year. This year's professional development for teachers at the middle high school has been focused on the following topics: improving teaching and learning with the task of curriculum mapping, especially within the new schedule; evaluating and assessing our curriculum for effectiveness and accuracy; and then, of course, trying to produce and promote and grow critical analysis within our students, within the content of our curriculum, within those area maps. This work on writing curriculum and mapping curriculum will continue throughout the rest of this school year and next school year. We hope to eventually develop a regular review process to update the curriculum and make sure that we stay on target. So, the construction and development of a curriculum review team is in the future plans. Timeline for the future and looking ahead, the work that we're now doing is tied closely to the five-year strategic plan, as well as the district's improvement plan and the middle high school improvement plan. Some subject areas are actually completely mapped out now. Most will be completed by the end of this school year. These are considered dynamic or living documents, so sometimes they'll change as teachers update best practices and as state frameworks change, or in some cases, as new teachers enter the building and join the department. Okay? We have an excellent example here of a grade six curriculum map, grade six ELA, which is very detailed, and would allow a new teacher, such as our new teacher who just started last month, to be able to step in and know what to teach, and to know the scope and sequence of what to teach and when to teach it. And this is just an example, and you can imagine a map like this in place for each subject at each grade level. One of the things I hope to follow up with at the next meeting, if I'm allowed to do so, was I would like to introduce our two newest teachers, both who joined mid-year. The first being our sixth grade ELA teacher, Nicole. We'll ask her to come in and talk to you a little bit about how her first month on the job has gone here in West Boylston. And I'd also love to be able to bring in our new pre-calculus teacher, Emma, who will begin the day we get back from February vacation. We're very fortunate to have found these two excellent teachers, which is no small feat mid-year. I look forward to being able to introduce them to you at our next meeting. Any questions?
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Mr. Fornier, how often are the curriculum maps being submitted by the high school teachers? Just because I do think moving from the block schedule to the schedule now, I think a lot of them have to adjust their pacing. And I just am wondering, are we...are they submitting these weekly, monthly? How often are they? Just to make sure that everybody's keeping up, are we asking for submissions on a regular schedule?
Yeah, so right now, as they're teaching in real time, they're submitting the maps for the curriculum that they're teaching into that Google document, so that by the end of the year, they'll have this whole year's worth of lessons part of that map. And then, heading into next year, if they're teaching a different course or a different elective, or they say, "Oh, I need to add a little bit more content in this area," they can make those adjustments, so that by the end of teaching in the second year of the schedule, we have, to your point, lessons, homework assignments, that are, you know, designed for the new schedule. So, the timing of that actually worked out with our need to rewrite our curriculum. Any other questions?
Chris, I'm just curious about what structure you've been able to put in place around, like, teaming around curriculum mapping, so that teachers aren't doing this in isolation, both subject areas and then, like, vertically, right? And then, grade-level teams are just interested in the process a little bit.
Yeah, so the grade-level teams, obviously, at the middle school level, the teachers meet every day, so that that is a work that they're doing, you know, as part of their team meeting time, you know, on a weekly basis. We also have dedicated all of our PD time this year for half-days and full-days towards the curriculum mapping work. So, we've given and will continue to give math department, you know, that half-day or that full-day to work together, six through 12. And we also...that's been the focus of our department meeting time this year. So, we hope that with the PD time that we have built into the schedule, and with the PD time we have scheduled for next year, and giving them time to collaborate, that will be done, you know, in harmony, you know, and as a team. I could envision a point where if a department needed more time, you know, we could sit down and negotiate what...how that would work as well.
Thank you. I know that's a challenge, so I appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions?
You're welcome. And I'd just like to thank my assistant principal, Dr. Kalov, and Amy Smith for helping put the slides together. And Dr. Kalov is currently overseeing the curriculum mapping submission and organization as one of her roles, as the curriculum supervisor for our building. So, while she's not here tonight, her imprint is all over these slides. So, thank you, Nancy.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you very much.
Next, we can move on to community input.
Hi. I was hoping that when we reach nine for the submission for the new school, could we possibly elaborate on why we were denied? I know we were denied for our first submission, but I don't know if they had given us any particulars. And then, also touch upon what we're requesting or what we're really asking for, I guess, in our next submission going forward?
Jaclyn, can I just ask? I should probably be better at this. Could you just state your name, so we have it for the minutes, please?
Jaclyn Leonardo, seven Nuha Circle, if we're going by.
Thanks. Yeah, we could probably do that, right? Do you want, it is on the agenda. You want to do it now?
I'll follow your lead, Mr. Pedoni.
All right. Typically, we don't really address comments as such if they're not on the agenda, but because it is, I think we can kind of elaborate. I think the first part is, I think if I remember correctly, there was about 60 submissions that made it to the second level and they picked 20 of that, to the level two.
Yes, that is accurate.
And they selected 20. So I don't know, you know, the full details behind their selection process, but, you know, a lot of it has to do with need. You know, basically, you're competing with 60 other districts at that point, right? So they selected 20 of them.
And available funds.
And available funds, correct. Part of that was the, there's two pieces to this process. One is for a new school and one is for accelerated repair. And the accelerated repair budget last year for the state was zero. So that may or may not have had anything to do with us getting selected because we were not in the accelerated repair program. And then for this year, one of the criteria we did, one of the feedback we did have is, and the form didn't really allow this at the original submission, is, and this kind of goes to your second question as well, is the committee several years ago, and we actually reviewed it last month, I think, because we have two new community members who were not part of that decision on what a new school would look like, and the idea is that we would build a new junior/senior high that would consist of a seven-through-12 building somewhere. And this current building that we're in would become a pre-K to six, and we would get rid of Edwards or retire it back to the town or whatever that process is. The submission only allowed for asking for a school. It doesn't give you the details on, you know, things like this. It would be like replacing a building. So when we met, one of the feedback was to incorporate all of that into the next submission. And at a meeting earlier this evening, which we'll elaborate on a little bit, a subcommittee report, the form was preloaded and the ability to add all that additional information has been updated. So we can now provide them with our full plan, which they didn't have prior because the form simply just didn't accept it. Anything else?
And the ability to put in the grade reconfiguration, which the old format did not permit.
Correct, yes. All right. Excellent. Any other community input? No? Okay. Next is to announce the public hearing of the FY25 budget. That'll be next month, March 13th at 6:30 PM, ahead of the regular school committee meeting. All right. Warrants, can I get an approval for payables warrants dated 1/16/2024, 1/29/2024, and 2/12/2024?
Make a motion to approve the payroll warrant dated 1/16/24, 1/29/24, and 2/12/24.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I get a motion for the approval of payroll warrants dated 1/19/2024 and 2/2/2024?
Motion to approve payroll warrants dated 1/19/2024 and 2/2/2024.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next is a vote to authorize a superintendent to submit the statement of interest form to the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Required form of vote to submit a statement of interest. Having convened an open meeting on February 14th, 2024, prior to the statement of interest submission closing date, the school committee of the Town of West Boylston, in accordance with the charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize a superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated March 14th, 2024, for West Boylston Middle High School located at 125 Crescent Street, West Boylston, Mass. 01583, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and priority category for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Priority five, modernization of school facility systems, poor energy efficiency and poor operating efficiency, and hereby future specificity acknowledges that by submitting this statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance of the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant of any other funding committed from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the Town of West Boylston School District to file an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. That's the motion I need someone to make.
Don't move.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We don't need a roll call or anything, right?
Please do it. Yes, please.
A roll call? Could I have a do a roll call? Can we start, Nancy?
Hubbard, aye.
Ponticelli, aye.
Breen, aye.
Lehman Miller, aye.
Pedoni, aye. Thank you. All right. Subcommittee reports. We'll start with policy subcommittee.
So we did meet, we had a Zoom meeting, but we don't have the policy.
We did not. We will have it on for our first reading for March.
Okay. So we are going to go ahead and just table that for March. There was a meeting discussing the policies, and I don't have those.
Bully prevention policy, which we removed one, but we needed to update it. We will have it in for first reading in March.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Safety subcommittee.
We met on February 2nd. We discussed the I Love You Guys Foundation presentation that was coming, which I'll touch upon in my report, which was positively received, and I'll have a little bit more information on that in a couple of minutes.
All right. Thank you. And budget subcommittee.
We met this evening to talk about a couple of different budget forecasts and things that could potentially change some numbers over the coming weeks prior to our March budget hearing.
All right. Thank you. We can move on to communication reports, starting with Major Edwards.
Is that loud enough?
What's that?
Is that loud enough?
I think so, yeah. I can't remember exactly.
So, Major Edwards, this month, we've continued our focus in the classroom, but we've also had a chance to have some fun activities centered around literacy and February's theme of I Love to Read Month. On January 24th, our literacy committee led by one of our first-grade teachers and program leaders, Mrs. Whiting, prepared an engaging evening of literacy activities with the theme Unmask the Reader in You. Some of the activities included students trying to guess masked readers that were presented throughout the week prior to the literacy night. We had a glow flashlight blacklight room for some cozy reading, a game room, puppet making, photo booth, an interactive bulletin board where students got to decorate different grade-level masks. And they also had an opportunity to take some used books home with them, along with a chance to purchase some new books at our Scholastic Book Fair put on by our PTA. We want to thank the many students and families that attended. We want to also give a special thanks to our PTA and to our literacy committee members for their thoughtfulness and thorough planning for such a great event. On Friday, February 2nd, we met as a whole school for our community meeting regarding responsibility. We selected a few fourth-grade students to share different ways to be responsible. We then had the whole fourth-grade class, they recited a acrostic poem and sung a song about responsibility. And then we also handed out responsibility certificates to recognize students from each classroom that exemplified responsibility over the last few months. Additionally, we had our masked readers, Mrs. Campbell, Mrs. Penny, Mrs. Akala, Mrs. Latoun, and Mr. Seer. They shared some of their favorite books that they like to read with our students. And lastly, we introduced the next meeting's theme of respect and discussed ways that students can show that, show respect all throughout the school. We'd like to thank our presenters, our fourth-grade students especially, for their efforts during the community meeting. And then at the end of our community meeting, we had our Title I teachers/reading teachers, Mrs. Gangai and Mrs. Bokankowicz, and they got the students excited about the I Love to Read Month, which is taking place in February. They explained to students about the reading challenges, which involved getting some prizes for reading books over the course of the month. And they also shared some fun activities that were taking place this week, along with our Spirit Week. So on Monday, we celebrated Community Reading Day, where members from the West Boylston community came in and read, read to different classrooms while students wore our Major Edwards spirit wear in colors. On Tuesday, we decided to stay home for a second pajama day. And then today, our students wore red or with hearts to promote their love for reading for I Love to Read Day. Tomorrow, students will wear something to represent a favorite fiction or nonfiction book, and we're calling it Share a Favorite Day. They can dress like a character, an animal, or any other creative idea that they come up with. And then lastly, we will have our Original Pajama Day, and we'll also be pairing that with our Buddy Reading, which will be, our fifth-grade students will be with kindergarten, fourth grade with second graders, and in our third grade, we'll be with first graders. They're going to take about a half hour to go into the gym and read a picture book to the younger students. We'd just like to thank the many community members and our teachers for participating and getting students excited to read before our vacation week. Couple important dates for this month, as I mentioned, Thursday for Share a Favorite Day, Friday will be grade-level Buddy Reading along with Pajama Day. Next week is Vacation Week, if you didn't know. And then when we return on Tuesday, February 27th, our West Boylston Coordinated Family and Community Engagement, the CFCE, will be hosting, believe it or not, their first meeting for the kindergarten transition program for incoming kindergarten students for next year. And that event will be held at Major Edwards Library, as we did last year, at 5:30. And then also, on Wednesday, February 28th, our PTA meeting, which was originally scheduled for tonight, was moved to the 28th, which will be at 7 o'clock in the library at Major Edwards. That's all I have for you guys. If you have any questions.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions, Rob? All right. Excellent. Mr. Fornier?
Thank you. Our students did a great job of updating you on a lot of the events happening at the middle high school, so my report will be pretty brief. This past weekend, actually the weekend before, the Lions football team held their annual end of season banquet. This year was held at the Wachusett Country Club. The team cheer, cheerleaders, coaches, and parents enjoyed an afternoon of player recognition, including team awards and a presentation made to all the senior student athletes. We wish to thank the parents who sponsored the event and wish our graduating seniors the very best in all of their future endeavors. This week, our boys' and girls' basketball teams recognized all of their senior athletes with their respective senior night games. Each coach spoke about each of the senior athletes, their contributions to the team this year, and over their playing careers here in West Boylston. The boys varsity will be preparing for the league tournament, which information will be given out in the next couple of days about where and when we play. Our girls will be competing in the o'clock tournament, beginning with some games that we will host here on this Saturday. And the girls should be seeded pretty near the top, being in the top two of the power rankings within the state divisional playoffs that will begin the first week in March. The ski club continues to bring nearly 50 students to Wachusett Mountain on Tuesdays. The group has enjoyed these excursions, and the recent snowfall has provided plenty of quality trails for the students. We've had to reschedule a couple of the days because of the inclement weather, and some extra days will be added on to the end of their skiing season. We wish to thank Ms. Richmond and Ms. Kaplan, as well as Kayla Bellis' dad, Lionel, who volunteers to chaperone these trips each week. Students all received their term two report cards and are already anticipating progress reports for the third term, which will be coming out on Friday. We have many students participating in internships in the community and throughout the greater Worcester area in order to gain valuable work experience. Many have started new internships with the start of the second semester, and we continue to seek new and different types of internships for the students who wish to experience a semester of hands-on or vocational training as part of their junior/senior year of high school. We appreciate Mr. Palmy, who currently oversees this program, and we were recently asked to collaborate with the town management, with the select board, to come up with an intern position for a high school student working in the town offices, which we're excited about. And as Mr. Adat mentioned, the students have vacation next week, but our basketball teams will continue to practice and get ready for their postseason. And as I mentioned earlier, our newest high school math teacher, Ms. Emma Camo, will be joining us the day that we get back from February vacation. She's excited, ready to go. She stopped in, picked up books, already met with the math department, and could not be more excited to be joining our school as a teacher. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Any committee members have any questions? All right. We can move over to Sheri.
Yes, just a reminder, I know we mentioned last month that we are accepting preschool applications for the lottery, which will be on April 1st. So the applications are electronic. It can be found on the district website under People Services or on the Major Edwards website. I believe it's the parent tab, and there's a preschool section there. And also, there is a preschool open house on Wednesday, March 13th, from 1:00 to 2:00 for parents and prospective students to come check out the classroom and meet the teachers. That's all I have.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions, Sheri? All right. Kristy?
In your packets, you have the expense report of what's spent to date, encumbered, and remaining. Anyone have any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Kristy? Looks all pretty normal. Thank you. All right. Rich?
Thank you. The 2023-24 district improvement plan included a goal to revisit and revise the district's longstanding 26-page school crisis handbook, a well-intentioned and detailed that was far from a practical document. On January 22nd, the district welcomed the I Love You Guys Foundation to present to staff during the morning session of the scheduled professional development day. It was evident that the foundation certainly appears to have the format and language that the district has sought. The foundation's core training was focused upon standard response protocol, standard reunification method, and crisis responses that were addressed, including hold, secure, lockdown, evacuate, and shelter. Stacy Avia was the instructional coordinator for the presentation. She was a law enforcement officer and hostage negotiator in Colorado for over 24 years before joining the foundation seven years ago. She has presented in several Massachusetts communities recently and will be returning to Worcester County again in August. She proved to be a compelling presence and a highly effective communicator throughout the day. The district will proceed to continue communication with the foundation as we plan additional trainings and review. A committee will be formed to guide the implementation. Additionally, the school safety and policy subcommittees will have additional responsibilities throughout the process with the hopes of having the program firmly in place by August. Also, on January 11th, I was pleased to join Chief Sodowsky and Sergeant Pettit at Anna Maria College for a school crisis table talk exercise. The event, sponsored by the Beth Israel Deaconess Medical Center and the West Boylston Police and Fire Departments, was attended by many neighboring district's departments, providing an opportunity to walk through crisis scenarios, allowing for all parties to provide insight to the inner workings of their planning, chain of command, and communication. It was both enlightening and reassuring, despite the nature of the conversations, to hear the deep level of preparedness and to observe the professionalism of all the departments that were on display throughout the exercise. Update on FY25 budget, as Mr. Pedoni mentioned, the subcommittee mentioned, met earlier this evening. The numbers were released from the governor's FY25 budget on January 25th. West Boylston Public Schools' fundings will increase by $24,900, with state contributions totaling $24,900. with state contributions totaling about $3.1 million. Foundation enrollment for the district was 830 students, an increase of four students from FY24. It is worth noting that this year, 212 districts in the state will be receiving the minimum $30 per student. That is an increase from last year's, 124 districts receiving the minimum. Also, important to note with the funding trends for Chapter 70, for the first time in five years, low-income students in the state decreased by over 7,000 students. Flat student enrollment continued to be a trend in the state as well, with an increase of only 225 students in the state. That is coming off of a decrease of over 30,000 students over the last three years leaving the state schools. So all of those are having a contribution to the decreased funding in Chapter 70. And another impact has been the inflation rate, which they capped at a 1.4% index. That is a decrease for the last two years. It's been capped at a 4.5% rate. So that is having a cascading effect on all the districts in their budget planning currently. I would also like to note that as of today, we have 67 school choice applicants for the April 1st lottery. That's all I have this evening.